Order to begin with the pledge of allegiance followed by invitation by the chairman.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we assemble here today to do the county's work. We ask for your presence, guidance, wisdom, and support. We ask for favorable weather and a special thanks to all those people who put their lives on the line to help others during this intemperate weather. We ask for your blessings on this meeting and be with us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Chair, there we go, microphone on, thank you. Our chair comments this morning is, is that I failed in the agenda planning to get the economic development. Representative, Mrs. DeVall, the president of that organization on our regular agenda. If Lana comes today, we will move her into the agenda and she for sure will be, and economic development will be on our minds. The second meeting of February. Also, when we get to that point in the meeting today, we'll have Economic Development's annual meeting is later on this month.
What a-
This week.
Thursday.
All right. Very good. I don't have any other chair comments, and so Commissioners, consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the items on the consent agenda.
May you second?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. Public comment? All five of our staff in attendance plus Roxanne? No public comment? Any Commissioner comments at this time? Hearing none, we'll move right on into the business agenda. Good morning, Roxanne. You have the floor on the appointment for the CVB.
Yes, I have two open lodging seats.
So the public knows who you are?
I'm sorry, I just assumed everybody knows. I'm Roxanne Lansing, the Executive Director of the Fannie County Convention and Visitors Bureau, and we're coming to you asking that you approve Nicole Harkness of Town Place Suites by Marriott and Therese Cruz of the Country Inn and Suites as two new board members to the Fannie County CVB. This will be a one-year term. They are allowed to do three consecutive two-year terms after that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I will be prepared to offer a motion in a minute, but Roxanne, would you share for the viewing public your board bylaw makeup? You have to have so many of such and such, and how these nominees fit into that?
Yes, and our board is made up of six lodging facilities and four at-large individuals from the public. These two are both lodging facilities, and so therefore-
Mr. Chairman, at our last monthly board meeting, we did discuss these two applicants at length, and in doing so, I will move that we approve these two members to the CVB board?
For one-year terms.
For one-year terms. I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Just questions. Mr. Chairman, number, number one, I'm not against either of these. I think they're both good, and I know Therese pretty well because she's been around the hotel business here in Garden for quite some time. But Nicole Harkness, I'm not real familiar with as far as, how long has she been at the Marriott and so forth?
Nicole's been at the Marriott, I believe, ten years. She's been the general manager for the last five.
I thought her name looked familiar, but I wasn't sure how long she'd been there.
She's been around today.
My question is this, and I'm just going to pick on Linda just because her name, I'm seeing her name right here, but people who go off of the board, do they have to sit out a year or is there, is there any-
They have to sit out twelve months and then they can be on the board again. Because they only have right now, I think, eleven facilities, so.
So they can be eligible again after twelve months?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries.
Thank you. Stay warm.
During the week in our snow emergency this week, I declared a state of emergency, and we need to confirm that by resolution. Paul, would you like to address the Commission? Please announce yourself and tell us why we needed this emergency.
I'm Paul Restly, the Fannie County Emergency Manager. Reason we needed it was we got inundated with all the snow and the wind. We had so many people stranded that we were losing resources faster than we could find them, so we were reaching out for some help. The Governor eventually did declare an emergency as well, so that helped a bunch, but I can't say enough about the residents of Fannie County. They, we had so many people step up and help with what we couldn't get to. We had no injuries or deaths throughout all of this, so we were very, very fortunate there. We had a pretty good game plan going on. I think we picked up over sixty people that were stranded between what was out on the west side of town. I think the farthest one we went and got was twenty-seven miles east of town. They were a little slower getting there because we had vehicles blocking, but we had a good farmer that helped us out, took one of the trucks out to where we could get our big brush truck and the Bearcat out there, and we rescued everybody. I mean, it just took a little time, but we had a priority. We checked with them every half an hour. We were calling them back to see how they were doing, how much gas they had, and I was making a lot of phone calls to a lot of people to see what resources we could find. County road guys helped a bunch. We had three people down on TV Road, and Kaylee and his group went down and it took them a while to dig them out. They were digging through nine-foot drifts down there, but we got them folks out as well. So all in all, I can't say enough about everybody that worked through all this with us, so. McKenzie was a huge help setting up. We had updates about every two hours, surprising even at two and four o'clock in the morning, the amount of people that was on these updates, so we, I think we worked through it pretty good, so.
Particularly grateful that we didn't have any injuries or worse out of this storm. This was, this was a bad one, and appreciate all the hard work and saving lives.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Paul, did you, I know you designated some shelters. Did you have use of any of those?
We had no request. Everybody, I had checked with all the local hotels in town to see how many rooms is available, and it was surprising with the storm how many rooms is out there. But everybody that we brought in were either local or people had made arrangements to get hotels. We had three of our homeless population that were there at the LEC, and we have, JDC prepared, United Way sent out a big push. We had all kinds of volunteers, but we just didn't have any requests. And even with this cold snap, the pipes were froze, but people opted to stay in their homes where it was warm. They were comfortable and they were used to their surroundings. We were prepared. We had Red Cross trailer down here. We had all kinds of cots. The community brought in blankets and pillows. I've got a whole EOC full of blankets and pillows down there, but fortunately, we haven't had to use them. I mean, we're still available, but it's just been no request for it at this time, so.
Right. It's recommended that we follow through with the declaration that I made on January eighth of state of emergency in Resolution 03-2024.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adopt a Resolution 03-2024 and authorize you to sign the resolution.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I, point of law here, here's a statute that's dealing with declaration, and if you will indulge me for a moment, where we're going is, is a little bit contrary to what this law says. It gives you the authority as chairman to declare, which you did. It also states that in your absence or incapacity, a majority of the other commissioners can declare. We, some years ago, by resolution, went one step beyond that, and in the absence or incapacity of anybody on the board, authorized the Emergency Management Director or his designee or alternates to declare and then notify the, the County Commission. What this law says is once declared, when you declare that, that declaration is good for seven days. To extend it beyond that, it comes before the Board of County Commissioners. So that would be a, probably a discussion point. Does it need to continue on, or is it, is it through where it can be terminated? And I, I have the statute here if you'd like to have it, but-
What, what do you, do you want to extend it, or is there any reason to-
Well, that's what I'm saying. We need to have this to-
I don't, I don't really feel at this time there's a reason to extend it. With the future forecast, it looks like we're going to be, the weather is going to be a lot more favorable. We've got one day coming up. Friday's going to be in the upper teens, but from then on, it's going to be thirties to forty degrees. At this point, I don't think we need to extend it.
What'd you say, Robert?
Is there any harm in extending it at this point? Because continued cold that we have?
I don't, I don't believe there is, but I, but that's really ought to be our action today is either extend it or terminate it, not, so.
I was thinking that it would terminate by its terms, seven days from the date of-
And I-
If Paul wants to do anything different.
At this point in time, I mean, again, it wouldn't hurt to extend it, you know, but with the weather forecast the way it is, I've been in pretty much contact daily with national weather. It looks pretty favorable for us, but I'm, I'm fine either way that the Commission would like to go.
Mr. Chairman, would Lon consider amending your motion to, to authorizing this for extension and until determined to be terminated and let it run and, and then have Paul decide when the weather is cooperative, that okay, it's time to terminate it?
Well, I, I'm not, I'm not here to, to argue the point or be contrary about it, but Paul's already saying that he believes that we're through the emergency, and so I don't know that there is any reason to extend it. But, you know, my motion can fail and somebody else can make a motion, or I just, we, we have had the emergency, and we're going to have winter weather, but is that necessarily an emergency?
I will second your motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the emergency declaration that will expire today unless extended. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Post. Motion carries.
Would you like to have that statute?
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate everything you've done.
All right. Kelly, you have three items next up. We'll hear from the Director of Human Resources.
Morning Commissioners, Kelly Munnion, Director of Human Resources. So first thing on the agenda this morning will be the Educational Assistance Plan. The Board is being asked to consider approval of an educational assistance plan to aid in recruiting, retention, opportunities for growth, and to have skilled and educated employees. Fannie County does not have and has not had a formal education assistance plan in place. The purpose and legal status of the program is provided from the plan provided by legal counsel. The purpose of the plan is to provide educational assistance to eligible employees. Tax status of the plan is, it is the intent of the county that the plan will qualify as an educational assistance program, meaning within the code, Section 127b1, with the benefits within the annual statutory maximum paid under the plan, be eligible for exclusion from the eligible employee's gross income under Code Section 127a for federal income tax purposes. Exclusive benefit, it is intended that the terms of the plan, including those related to coverage and benefits, be legally enforceable and that the plan be maintained for the exclusive benefit of Fannie County employees. Plan does not benefit spouses or dependents of employees. Having this plan in place will also clearly outline eligibility requirements through a formal process and requesting assistance reimbursement for educational purposes. The alternatives presented today, approve the educational assistance plan as drafted by legal counsel with noted amendments by county administration as presented today and provided to you through the county counselor, or deny the educational assistance plan as presented today and direct staff to make recommended changes to the plan document. Staff recommends option one to approve the plan. The additional fiscal impact, the plan will require annual appropriation through the budgeting process. Any request for reimbursement will be requested by April 30th for consideration in the next year's budget. Any questions?
Kelly, do, do employees have to come in and ask for approval that their plan may be approved down the road? I mean, if their educational opportunity has to be approved before you make an application?
Yes, yes, and there is a form that was drafted by council, I believe it was in your packet as well, that they will make that request through, and then will-
Who oversees that?
It comes to HR, and then it goes over to the Fiscal Committee for the budget, which ultimately you would see through the budgeting process.
What's the anticipated impact? Give me, give me a range of cost to the county to provide this additional benefit?
Up to fifty to fifty. I know just in this last year, I've only had two people reach out about tuition assistance, and I've told them how it would work and that we were working on it to present to you guys, so there could be more out there that I don't know about. I had two requests in this past year.
Once the education plan is approved, how long does the employee have to work for the county in order not to have to repay it back to us?
Three years, and they can't apply until they're here for six months. If they do leave between, excuse me, before that three years, it would be prorated out.
Questions, yes?
A couple questions for Kelly. Didn't, in going back historically, didn't we have a similar plan some years ago in the county?
I could not locate anything but, I mean, possibly before me. I know that they have just given some money, you know, for some reimbursement. Randy had approved some things. I don't ever know that there was a formal plan in place.
Question number two, someone is going to authorize the particular course study that the employee takes?
Yeah, the plan spells out that it pertains to your job and that there's reasonable expectation of promotion with that.
So if a person, I'm going to use a hypothetical, worked for Road and Bridge, but they wanted to study, take a course in accounting so that they might apply for a different job?
Different job.
Can that be authorized?
That would be something to ask Robert about, but that's-
Robert? It's envisioned that by your example is that if, if that is a, a need for that department, then that would be considered.
So that's pretty subjective then in deciding. Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
My comment is, I do believe in the past that it has been encouraged in education, going on for masters or something like that, but I don't believe we ever funded it, so I think this is a good policy to encourage further education.
There's been a couple employees just in the time I've been here that have received a little bit, but it, to my knowledge, the APRN might have been close to this annual amount that's allowed under this plan, but I know the other one was not. And there could have been more that I didn't know about, but I do know about a couple.
Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, to Robert, well, to Robert or Kelly, just looking ahead at the other two that we're going to be asked to consider, there's a reference on fiscal note that it was budgeted for 2024 on the other two. On this one, it does not say that it was budgeted for in 2024. So is this something that we're adding to the budget? Is this something that's already, was already anticipated and is included in the 24 budget?
This is something that we would, we were working on during the 24 budget process. We did not have a set dollar amount specifically that we set aside, except for in the Road and Bridge Department for CDL training. That was, that was one that we initially targeted because we were working out with the community college, bringing that into the, to the county, and we, we do have one individual involved in that program right now that recently started.
So this would be something that wasn't budgeted specifically and would come out of general fund? Is that correct?
It, either, either that or within their, the departmental budget.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussion on the matter before the Commission on the educational assistance plan as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move we approve the educational assistance plan as it has been presented.
And I would second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Post. Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, the second item I have today kind of goes along with the educational assistance plan, and it does talk about it within the plan. It's specifically a commercial driver's license, CDL participation agreement. The Board is being asked to consider approval of the CDL participation agreement in an effort to assist with recruiting, retention, and to maintain skilled equipment operators. On February 7th of '22, the entry-level driver training regulations were updated permitting only those with verified training requirements administered at a registered training facility to take the required CDL knowledge and skills test. Prior to February of '22, Fannie County provided on-the-job training by use of our Road and Bridge management and county vehicles and/or equipment to learn what was needed to sit for that skills test. Recently, Fannie County has partnered with Seward County Community College and Garden City Community College for use of our property on the fairgrounds for their CDL class driving portion. Fannie County Road and Bridge will maintain the area of this property to ensure it is clean, ready for use when needed, removal of snow and debris, et cetera. Within this agreement, we have been allowed two slots each class session for the CDL program at a discounted tuition rate. Some of the CDL program will be held at Garden City Community College. The remainder of the classes will be held at Seward County Community College. The employee will have some costs as well, as outlined in the attached agreement that you were provided. All course commitments are provided to the employee prior to agreeing to sit for the course by means of a CDL packet containing information from Seward County Community College, Garden City Community College, Public Works Operation Coordinator, and Human Resources. Recruiting had been slow. Right now, we have one vacancy within the Equipment Operator Division down at Road and Bridge. As Robert said earlier, we do have one employee already in the program currently. We have three others that are qualified but waiting for a future class, and four not qualified yet, but should be by about mid-year and ready to go once a class is available. So, the alternatives today are to approve the CDL participation agreement as presented and provided to you through county counselor, or reject the agreement and ask staff to make any recommended changes. And then again, the additional fiscal impact to the county was already put into the 2024 budget, budget for Road and Bridge. The tuition rate at this time, the discounted tuition rate that we are given is 2250 per employee enrolled. Any wages paid to attend the course, of course, are already budgeted through the salary line.
What's the anticipated number of people that are going to be involved in this program?
We have seven remaining, three that will sit in a future class, and then four that could be qualified by about mid-year.
We're allowed up to one person per course?
Two slots. They gave us two.
Two.
Yeah. We only used one on this first go-around. The other gentleman wasn't ready financially himself. He couldn't do it. And so, we only have one in this current class, but we are allotted two slots. If we don't use them, they'll open it up externally and try to fill it that way.
If we tried to get more people involved in the class, we would pay the regular tuition rather than the free two spots that we got under the participation agreement, correct?
We pay the tuition whether they sit in those, for those two spots, we pay that tuition, 2250.
But it's a discounted rate?
It is discounted.
And the balance, well, I just understand how important it is to have CDL-approved people.
Correct.
And it is good for retention also. Are we limiting ourselves to two people, Robert, or are we available for more?
That, I'm not certain if we're allowed in that class to pull in more, because they are allowing a little bit of a break for Fannie County employees on this program.
If they had us? This six-week class.
What's the clawback provision? How long do they have to stay with us?
It's the same, three years, and they have to be here six months to get into it.
Yes, sir.
To me, this is a mirror of what we just passed. That hypothetically used, that accounting person can go get more accounting. How about, and I use Road and Bridge employee as an example in my hypothetical, this helps that Road and Bridge employee who needs the CDL. So, with that, when you're ready, I'll offer a motion to approve it.
Is there a second? And then we can have more discussion if necessary. Been moved and seconded to approve the commercial CDL license as presented and in our package as part of the motion. Is there any further discussion from the Commissioners?
I'll add a point right quick, Mr. Chairman.
I just have a question. Qualify, how do they qualify? You said you had three or four that are not qualified yet.
They haven't been here there six months yet.
Okay, okay. And I do have a point of hesitation on that. Thirty years ago, I took that course in Seward County, and it was a one-day course.
Oh, wow.
So, they have a little more, more rules.
Yes.
I guess.
My point is we have a number of county employees who have requirements for, for annual educational credits. Sheriff's Office comes to mind. Paul Restly has to have 40 hours and so on, and the county pays for that. So, this has been fair to some other employees.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mine's just simply a comment. I compliment the county for working with both Garden City Community College and Seward County Community College in this cooperative agreement. I think just shows the spirit of collaboration and cooperation, and I'm pleased that we were able to do that and work out this agreement.
Any other further discussion on the pending motion with a second? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. All right.
Last thing we have is not going to be so easy. Just a little bit of, I guess, Chairman's comment on this is that we were all given a red line with council's comments on this. And I'll be interested in what the other Commissioners' viewpoints are or is to an individual. But please explain what you're intending to do with this, the changes or adoption of this revised drug and alcohol policy.
Yeah. So, to update the drug and alcohol policies that you were given, the last copies that I could locate were revised in August of '05 and October of '07. Last board meeting minutes that I could locate, four revisions were June and August of 2005. The two main revisions, aside from the updated rules, regulations, are quarterly random drug testing for all county staff, including elected officials. Currently, the only staff subject to random are Health Clinical EMS technicians, Department of Corrections, Juvenile Detention, Road and Bridge, Sheriff Jail Patrol Investigations and Evidence, and the Attorneys Victim Witness Coordinators. The second thing we have would be the removal of the Last Chance Agreement with direction of county administration making Fannie County a zero-tolerance employer. We do use Kansas Drug Testing as third-party administrator. In October of '23, myself and Kansas Drug, with recommendations from county administration, worked to update the policies, which were then reviewed by legal counsel and provided to you through the county counselor. So, today, the alternatives are to adopt as presented with the revisions or reject and direct staff to make any additional changes. We would recommend option one to adopt the policies as revised with Kansas Drug and reviewed by legal counsel. The fiscal impact, since we use grow well, we won't see any additional cost in the collections. The additional cost with Kansas Drug Test to random all county staff was allocated in the 2024 budget.
I'll start because I guess that's the prerogative. Yes. Well.
We, that was by choice.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a personal note. It doesn't reflect the majority of the Commission, but I will not pass a drug and alcohol policy to impose on employees that does not include the five members sitting at this board or any other elected official. So, if this policy doesn't apply to every elected official, I'll be against it. Two is, is that I believe that we should have more discretion in a policy so that we are not legislating from this bench what an administrator or other supervisor would want to do with somebody who failed a drug test. We, we are better than that, and I believe that as a legislative body, we should not be attempting to administrate from this bench to such an extent that we handicap the ability to make good decisions with regard to an employee who may, may have made a horrible mistake. There are other circumstances that I'm not going to try to describe all those, as various as they may be. But that's, that's where I'm coming from on this, and so it's, it's hard for me to want to say that we're zero-tolerance employer, but rather we do not tolerate infractions of our drug policy and that they will be handled administratively according to our personnel policy. That's, that's where I'm at on this. So, with that, I'll open it up to the rest of the Commissioners for conversation or questions.
And Mr. Chairman, I would just simply echo your thoughts. Those were the thoughts going through my mind as I read this policy.
County Counselor, do you approve the proposed policy as written?
I think that the proposed policy as written came mostly through recommendations between Hinkle Law and administration. I think that, I mean, and realistically, it's also, I guess, personal commentary in the middle of this one as well. I think that we're in an age where it becomes difficult when you can go to another state and legally use some substances such as marijuana and come back to this state, and it's not something that comes out of your system immediately. I mean, it's like alcohol and all of that. I think we have to be mindful as a governing body of changing circumstances and lots of different things. I mean, as far as substance-wise, does it, does it look fine the way that it's written? Sure. But I think it's a policy issue at this point in time, which is where the Board has to make that decision.
Are there any areas in there where, you know, a person is, like, in Colorado, takes a legal substance over there, gets home, gets tested, that they have a second chance, or they get a grace period, or anything like that, or is that just zero tolerance?
The way that it's written, written right now is it's a zero tolerance. So, if you're testing for, I mean, like, and we've, we've defined how alcohol can be bad in theory, I guess, as you're getting tested for these drug tests. It's a, I mean, is it in your system because you were partaking of it the night before and it's still showing up on something? Or is it, I mean, how are, how do these tests work that we're using in this one? How does any of that? I mean, can these tests differentiate between they were currently on something at the time that they were tested? Or is it something that's still in their system? Because, I mean, just from my prior time in the criminal law side of things, knowing that depending on the, the fat content of a person's body will depend on how long marijuana continues to show up in the body. So, I mean, someone could have been in Colorado two weeks ago, and now they got tested, and it's still showing up in their system. It's not something that they're necessarily using it as infecting and impairing their ability to do their job as they're right here. So, I mean, there are different considerations, but I don't know that, I, I don't know as far as the testing goes, if there's a way to differentiate between what's what there.
Yeah. We're not qualified to, you know, look at the levels and determine, you know, how long somebody's been using. But under the current Last Chance Agreement, the employees immediately removed from work. They have to pay for the substance abuse counseling. They don't come back until they're clean. You know, those tests are on them to pay for. We've had some, you know, just refuse to test and say that, you know, they were using meth or whatever. So...
Yuri?
Yes, sir.
Question, I guess, either for Kelly or for Robert. We have a drug testing policy right now in the county for some people. Can you share with us in a few words what's, what's the weakness of the, of the present regulations that we have?
Well, it's, it was just last updated in 2005 and 2007, so we've just gotten the regulations and things up to date with the new policy. But then the request by administration was to be a zero tolerance, and so I had asked for that to be changed within. Other than that, updating the designated employer representatives on it, it still showed Pete Olson and Cheryl Carroll in that last policy. So, just updating the designated representatives that are currently here and the doctor that was listed on there for the MRO.
Well, my personal view is, is that we ought to table it and put it on a planning session for, or a work session for discussion amongst the department heads and the commission with regard to the zero-tolerance aspect of it, and...
Will that be the second meeting in February with the other?
Yes, it would.
Yes, okay.
The 2005 edition that she's talking about, I believe maybe I was a party to writing part of the, of the county policies. And at that time, that applied mostly to the Sheriff's Office, the Juvenile Detention Center employees, and Road and Bridge. And then we got around to a term called something rather safety-sensitive, and it included a few more. That's why I was wondering what, what needs to be addressed that the old policy didn't. Are we now interested in, in drug and alcohol testing in Dory's office?
And those directors are interested in that, and that's why we've included the entire county.
All right.
Sir?
I'll offer the motion to table this, Mr. Chairman, until whenever.
Okay. I'll second this table.
All right.
Then I've got a question after.
Well, why don't we go ahead and address the concerns before we vote?
By adopting zero tolerance, does that improve your position with insurance people or not, to make any difference?
I don't know.
No. I don't believe it, I don't believe it does.
How many, do you have any idea how many counties or employers have adopted zero tolerance?
No. I could, I could give you some numbers by the February meeting.
When we're trying to hire employees, that's going to be a handicap in your director by saying this, hiring a lot of zero-tolerance. I don't know if that's eliminating some prospective employees or not.
Well, and we have to be really careful when we draft a policy like this because we have five elected officials that run their own office. And that hire-and-fire decision needs to be made by them and not by...
And I know I had...
Or by us.
I had spoken to Mike about this as well.
Well, we have several other officials.
So, there's two others. Yeah, I've talked to three.
Thank you. I would ask for you to continue to ask everyone for their input, and perhaps we can take it up at the work session. Sir?
Mr. Chairman, just adding to that, I, based on Larry's thing, just to make it clear, I too would be interested in what's the insurance company's response to this? What are other counties doing with regard to this? Some of that, and there may be some other things, but I think that needs to be a part of the discussion in this work session.
Well, and I guess, Larry, to go back to your question or statement, the current policy does state that if you are hot on a pre-employment, you're immediately pulled from being eligible to be hired, and the policy states you cannot reapply. That's, it just says you cannot reapply. That is how current policy reads.
Okay. We have pending motion to table this issue and put it on the work session agenda for the second meeting in February. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Kelly and Robert, with regard to that work session, let's have a redline copy of the proposed changes for everyone to look at, but please remove council's comments.
Okay.
For privilege purposes.
Okay.
And then we'll go ahead and publish to the department heads and, and get it ready for the work session.
I think the personnel policy is ready as well. They could go together.
All right. Very good. Jenny, if you're not frozen?
Good morning. Jenny Newberry, Assistant County Administrator and Finance Director. I am requesting that the Board adopt Resolution 2-2024 to waive the requirements of KSA 75-1120A as they apply to Fannie County for the year ending December 31st, 2024, and that would be waiver of gap reporting. The requirements of the cash basis and budget laws of the state do not require any, do not require the gap reporting and are significantly different. There are also no revenue bond ordinances or resolutions or other ordinances or resolutions of the county that require financial statements and financial reports to be prepared in gap format. So, we are requesting gap waiver for 2024.
Any questions of Ms. Newberry from the Commission?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adopt Resolution 02-2024.
Moved and seconded to approve the resolution as presented. Any further discussion? I moved and seconded to approve the resolution as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Down the report list, Fire Incident Report is available for our review, and if we can scroll through that for the public. I don't think anyone's here from the Fire Department. Also, want to thank Chief Ursick and all those members of the Fire Department for all their extraordinary efforts during the blizzard time and assisting Paul in emergency management, and a job well done. Development update from McKenzie?
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. McKenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. So, I just have a few updates not related to our current projects within the, within the county, but I just wanted to update you that we do have our first BZA meeting tomorrow since the new appointments have been made. So, they will be sworn in tomorrow at the BZA meeting. Then Thursday, we've got Planning Commission meeting, and for any of the commissioners that are interested, the city this morning is doing a pre-meeting for a housing update. I think it's probably mostly for the city housing projects, but if any of you are interested in attending, that is happening today, and I think that's at 11 o'clock.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And then, just to update you, we are meeting with the city next week to continue the discussions on the NDS agreement, so that's all I have for you.
All right, I'd like to move that NDS agreement off of dead center. Let's get it going one way or the other, and McKenzie, you need to have Commissioner involvement in that. Please report that back to us, and as we get reorganized here, I'm sure either this chair or a new chair will help you move that along. It's important for the county and the city to get on the same page.
Agreed. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam County Counselor, do you have anything to report?
We, uh, I've had one, uh, recent last week, potential, we've had a core complaint that we've received from the Attorney General's Office. I'm working through that with the Sheriff's Office at this point in time, trying to figure out what, if any, issues that we may have had with that. We had also received a, um, a letter in compliance with KSA 12-105BD, but I believe it was in error because the, um, Fannie County is in the name of the particular business that they're looking at going after. They decided to send that letter to Fannie County, but it's not actually a, it's not a, one that is part of the county itself. I have reached out to council both via telephone and sent a response letter to let her know that that particular business is not actually affiliated with the county itself. Hopefully that will stop anything from moving forward with that. And then, just an update, as we've been doing, as we've been going along with, uh, potential tax sale, there has been some movement in getting the e-filing system back up, although, a couple of times that I've tried to get into it, it's just sat and spun for me, so I'm not sure what luck that others have had. I'm guessing that courthouse itself has had more luck in being able to get in. They are still working on getting everything updated in their records from that October 12th incident date to present, so the entire record is not in there, but it's getting closer. They're also getting counties more online again, where they can actually e-file things rather than having to go and paper file, which is still what's happened to hap, having to happen in Fannie County. They're slowly working towards getting the system back up and running, but, uh, just, I'm hopeful that soon we can really start moving forward on that process for that tax sale. Just want to make sure that we have all the information available to make sure that we can get good title and do what we need to do.
It's reflected in last session's minutes, like a hard target date of 30 days after the court opens, that we have progress with regard to a tax sale. We have been derailed, but we have not made it clear to taxpayers that if you don't pay your bill, there's a consequence. Right now, there doesn't seem to be much of a consequence, although, to your credit, we had a large delinquent taxpayer pay considerable funds, and just talking about it seems to matter. So, I would like to move past the talking part. Ms. Schartz, and I'd like to see us get this thing off the ground and get going for the benefit of all of us who do pay our taxes. Anything else on that? All right, very good. Thank you. Mr. Commissioner, Robert, how are you, sir?
Doing well. Just a brief update from the library repair. We didn't get a whole lot of traction on, on that. Remember, we were waiting for a couple of other proposals, but because of the weather, that kind of got put off to the backside, so we'll, Kyle would be working with Pam on the library to try and get that information, so you have something to act upon next meeting. Additionally, we're still working on a weekly basis with, on the LEC to gather data for that roughly sixty, fifty-six different items of, for, for costs, so we can start developing that discussion on, on the scope of that project. And the Goldberg Group reported last meeting, they were going to be out here on the 8th and 9th because of the storm. That did not happen, and they'll be coming in next week on the 23rd and 24th. My understanding is that Commissioner Dris and Vishney are both unavailable for that meeting. Is that correct?
I am not. I'm in Topeka.
Yeah.
So am I.
And Dave, would you happen to be available for that while they're here?
Give me that date again.
It's the 23rd and 24th.
Of?
Uh, next week, Ja, uh, January. And that's the Goldberg Group. And what they're doing, they're coming in and looking at the current facilities and speaking with the departments, uh, just to begin getting a scope of services for that, for that project. Anybody else?
Both days.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Exactly what time?
Uh, I'll have, I'll have, ask Jenny to go ahead and get that out to you on...
Yeah, get that to me, and go from there.
Okay. Additionally, we should, we should have wrapped up the, a couple of architect agreements for you, one on the attorneys and one for the EMS Health Department project, and also, the other thing is the construction, um, construction agreement for the renovation of the sewer pump stations. You should have that before you at the next meeting as well. That is all that I have for you this morning. Any questions?
Yes, on the LEC Committee, you're not meeting today, correct?
Um, tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
It's moved to tomorrow.
Okay.
Usually it's Tuesdays at nine o'clock, so because of this commission meeting, been moved till tomorrow.
Yep.
All right. And this committee, are you going to be reporting back to the commission then on the first meeting in February or the second, do you think, under the schedule that we have?
Unfortunately, I will be, I'm leaving town today, so I will miss tomorrow's LEC, and because of the Topeka incident, I'll miss that one as well. So, I will miss the next two LECs. So, I'm hoping Lon can cover me tomorrow.
I'll, I'll be present tomorrow, but I'll, I'll be in Topeka next week.
All right, so, let's, we'll hear an update from the LEC Construction Committee next session, and thank you, Commissioner Vishney, for being able to cover for the assigned chair for that committee. All right. Anything else for the county administrator? If not, monthly department reports, do you have anything to add to those?
Nothing other than what you've received.
All right. Next item on our agenda is the reorganization of the Board. We have several things to do. Assign a chairman, a vice chairman, official depositories, official newspaper, and committee assignments. Silence is always fun, but kind of where I'm at on it is I've enjoyed being your chairman for a rookie year. I will serve if elected. Perhaps the tradition, however, of this commission is to move that position around, and I'm not opposed to that personally, and also I think that we have some important projects that are outstanding. We've made substantial progress, sometimes to my chagrin on the speed at which we do not go, but that's my ten cents worth is, is that I am willing to serve, but at the same time, I'll honor the tradition if anyone chooses to want to serve.
Mr. Chairman, I, I believe you've done a very fine job as chair, and, and you've been prepared for the meetings, you've been available for the planning sessions with the administration, and I, as one, am not concerned about rotations and so forth. I think it's the most capable and the most, uh, one that has the ability to be that chair. And then, quick side note, I know in Salina County, they just elected a new chair, but the chair had been in place for four years, the same person. So, at this point, I would nominate you as the chair for 2024.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
How quick you are. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Just because he can?
Motion carries. Even with the dissenting vote, I'll work very hard to get your vote. But it counts.
I will commend you as well, Mr. Chairman. You've done a fantastic job, and if you're willing to go through all the time and effort, I'm proud of you.
All right, well, we'll see that after your work on the LEC. You want to talk about dedicating some time and sticking your leg out there. I think you volunteered for a major project in our county.
I would, if you're ready for a nomination for vice chair, I'll offer one.
Please.
I'll, I'll offer the nomination of Larry Jones for vice chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded that Larry be the vice chair again this year. Is there further discussion? Anything you want to put on the record, Commissioner Vishney? Subject to timing. What a peaceful remark.
Ready.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Jones. The next thing then is to designate official depository. Madam Treasurer, would you go ahead and introduce yourself to the voting public? And I believe we have funds, not only in, in official depository of commerce, but also investments around town.
Yes, so I'm Trista Joyce County Treasurer, so I believe what we have done previously in the past is we have designated all eligible financial institutions as depositories of Fannie County. To be an eligible financial institution, they just need to have a branch location within the county. So, the, the, our main checking account does live at commerce, however, this allows us to invest at any institutions that are, are eligible to hold our funds.
Okay, so your recommendation to us is to designate any qualified financial institution as a depository?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve all qualified financial institutions in Fannie County as our official depositories.
Second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to follow the advice of the Treasurer, and that all qualified financial institutions be official depositories for Fannie County. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Official newspaper designation was the Garden Seed Telegram. I don't see any other alternative. Is there a motion to designate the Telegram?
Well, I, I'd like to make a couple of comments either before or after the motion.
Well, why don't you go ahead and comment before we make a motion then?
Well, and, and I'm going to turn to Robert a little bit with regard to statutes and so forth, and I know we are to designate by resolution newspaper as official county newspaper. However, I, and, excuse me, and I also know that our rules versus the city rules are a little bit different, you know, throughout the state, constitutional home rules, statutory home rule, and so forth. Salina, just recently, the city in December updated their website as the official newspaper of Salina along with the Salina Journal. And so, I don't know, I, I'm still concerned about the lack of notification, if you will, to citizens when we put something out there with regard to taxes or whatever the notifications are, that they're not necessarily seeing those notices in a publication that's published three times a week. Sometimes, as I'm having trouble with right now, you can't access it online and, and so forth. So, I, I'm not against naming the Telegram, but my question is, can we ma, name a, our website, for example, as a secondary or...
How about vice versa?
Well, or...
Make ours primary.
Or make ours primary. But I, I know there's some rules that we have to follow in our statutory home rule, rules, but I'm concerned that people are not seeing the notices and so forth, and so how does that official newspaper help us getting the word out? So, I'm directing those to our administrator, but, Mr. Chairman, that's my comments.
Well, I think they're good comments, and is there a fiscal cost, or is there some operational cost to designating something on our website for legal notices?
There may be additional costs associated with that in, in terms of trying to establish something that is formal within the county's website for it, but you are still required to have a printed newspaper as your primary, and, and county can be secondary, and that's what I'm assuming that what's happened either in Salina or Salina County. I don't know what they did, but in essence, they've established that that website is the official website for notifications of the ca, of the city or the county. Is that correct?
Well, they, and I'm reading from the news article that was posted on December 21st about Salina, that they made the city's newly updated website the official newspaper of, in quotes, of Salina with additional notices to be published in Salina 311, whatever that might be. But their vote was to move legal notices online, and they chartered out of the Kansas statute previously in order to be able to do that. So, they somehow chartered out of the statute, and then they were able to name their website as the official newspaper.
Well, there isn't any doubt that we spend, as taxpayers, a lot of money putting tax notices and so forth in the Telegram. We spend a lot of money, three full pages of notices, at least twice a year, that possibly could be avoided, and if Commissioner Vishney would think it appropriate, I think this ought to be referred to the county counselor to consider what... to the county counselor to consider what home rule resolution we need to make, what is something that we can do and plan to avoid that cost to the taxpayers and be more efficient with their dollars. But in the meantime, I believe we have to have a designated newspaper for twenty-twenty-three, or twenty-twenty-four, excuse me.
And in my final comment, Mr. Chairman, I, I brought this up the last couple of years at least, and I know there's a newspaper in Ulysses who's trying to get circulation here. I don't know that that's happened and so this is not something that's just come to my mind in the last week or two. This is something that's been on my mind for several years.
Well, it's, it's, if we, if you will, let's refer that issue to the county counselor to get us in the right position and it's a good idea if we can avoid the publication costs to an outside entity for those legal notices that we're required to post by law. Because some things I think that we're going to have to understand, for instance, Commissioner Pishney, if we were to engage in a tax sale, the court is not going to accept our county website as a publication of the notice of tax sale.
I understand.
We may be able to handle our own notices for purposes of delinquency and so forth, but if we, anyway, I, I, I think we also have a duty to designate a paper so that the court has a designated publication for legal notices.
Is it your understanding it's its own website or is it this Salina three-one-one website?
I, I'm just going to read it from here. That they, they made their newly updated website, the official newspaper, with additional notices published in Salina three-one-one. So their website is their official newspaper. But the other thing is, and I'm definitely agreeing with you, Mr. Chairman, that it be referred to our council, but the circulation of the, the official newspaper has declined significantly over the last couple of years. So I don't, and I'm not disagreeing with what you said, but I just don't know how many people are even subscribing to the paper to see the notices.
Well, it's fascinating to me that in the legal profession, we have to continue to use the Telegram and nobody's reading it. In the old days, believe it or not, a long time ago, you published your notices on the doors of the courthouse. It was cluttered with notices. And then, then we got away to newspapers and now with, with the internet and so forth. It is.
It's in statute, yes. And it has been, it has been introduced to the legislature over the last several years to change that statute based on what, what Chairman just said.
Yeah, I think the Telegram's down to five, six hundred people in circulation, if I read the numbers correctly. So that doesn't get us much coverage.
We do, but only because of Sudoku. That's, my, my wife's got to have the hard copy of Sudoku in front of her.
They, they sell books of those, sir.
Sorry, Jan, if you're listening to this.
He is listening and you will pay for that. That's just heads up. Jan, be gentle.
Mr. Chairman, according to statute, we need to designate official newspapers. So I will move that we approved and adopt resolution oh-one dash twenty-two-four that designating the Telegram as our official newspaper.
For one year.
For one year.
But we can, I think we can add.
You could always add to it, can we not?
We can add to it.
I believe that this resolution is perpetual, so it will remain the official newspaper until such time that you choose to change it. So if you do get something, then you could introduce a new resolution.
I would, I would second that motion and, and just echo what you said earlier that we have our council look into this, please.
Very good. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Official board committee assignments are going to be tabled. I want to talk to each of you about the assignments that we made last year and whether your willingness to serve on those, and then we'll take those up at our next meeting. Maybe it'll be more than. And what I'm thinking there is, is that if anybody wants to make any changes or if something they want to do, bring it to my attention before I make those assignments. So for right now, everybody's assignment will stay the same, but we'll take that up at the next meeting in more positive than forty-six degrees. What else have I missed? Madam Clerk, you have a schedule of events? Any changes, updates for those?
No, I believe we have all of the upcoming Topeka events, chamber breakfasts.
Very good. My report is, is that I'll give a full and more accurate report after reorganization at our next meeting. We continue to be excited about the work that Compass is doing and the growth in the community. Intend to attend the annual meeting for economic development and would encourage all the commissioners to attend if they can for that important annual meeting. Left to right, Commissioner Jones?
I have no meetings to report on.
Mr. Dries?
Um, since I'm at this last meeting, I had convention of visitors, LEC, and have convention visitor and fair board tomorrow and follow it up with a Great Plains Thursday, I believe it is. So other than that, I did attend the groundbreaking ceremony, as did all of the rest of you, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Pishney, thanks for getting chair involvement in the LEC Committee and we'll look forward to the report next time.
We'll try to, to fill in as, as well as our regular chair of that committee does. Couple of things, one is just this past week, we had the State of the State by the governor and she put out a budget to use surplus funds. There's already disagreement with some of those suggestions. Also, this past week, I watched a hearing on Senate Bill one ninety-six, which is the LAVTR, and for our proponent side, KAC and KCCA, both provided written and in-person testimony, there was a roomful of people and also a number of other proponents. One of them, and I can't think of his last name right now, but the commissioner from Shawnee County, Bill, did a very nice job of explaining the benefits to the counties of LAVTR. But the chair of that Assessment and Tax Committee is not necessarily in favor of reestablishing. So the guess is it might, the committee may not even work the bill. The committee may decide to do away with LAVTR legislation altogether. So it's going to be interesting going forward. The other couple of things is we have the, well, next Tuesday, we have the KLPG and we'll be talking about the legislative policy from that group, but the KAC, the Garden City Chamber, the other groups that we say that we're going to be a part of with their legislative policies, those are all in place. And so I would encourage everyone to take a look at those policies as we go forward. I'll be talking to some legislators next week about some of those policies myself. And then lastly, the two subjects that I've noticed just in the last week or so, there's been a conversation with some of the commissioners across the state about solar and solar farms and what kinds of questions should be asked about that. And so I'm accumulating some of that information so that if we are faced with that kind of stuff, we'll know what's happening across other counties. And then lastly, to the issues that I've been attuned to, in Cedric County, they're battling the same thing we are here as for law enforcement and trying to attract and retain good officers in their sheriff's department. They provided a seven-point-eight percent raise for their sheriff's department, starting in twenty-twenty-four. They got their starting pay up to twenty-six dollars an hour. As soon as they did that, the city of Wichita Police Department upped the pay for the police department and so they're still staying, the sheriff's department is still behind. Police department's pay starts at twenty-nine dollars an hour. So my point is, Fannie County is not unique in trying to attract and retain, whether it be Public Works or Sheriff's Department. Cedric County has a competition going on right now between their two law enforcement departments. Well, they have more than one city, I guess. I misspoke. But between Wichita Police Department and the sheriff's office, just interesting to watch. But they, when we talk, tie it back to LAVTR, you're trying to do a seven-point-eight percent raise to the sheriff's department and yet the state is telling us how to operate our counties. Still troubling.
Solution to that is to elect more representatives that are reflective of good governance.
Well, we'll see if we can find some of those.
Very good. Commissioner Jones?
The only meeting that I've got scheduled is, I'm in County on eighteen, this Thursday, and I'm going to be in attendance. I've got to attend to the true version, but I encourage all of you, you've surely gotten the KLPG newsletter and the, the weekly call had technical problems last week. Doug assures me that he's got it corrected, so we'll have, this Friday, they'll be up and running again, so make sure to dial in, listen, it's quite interesting.
Well, I know with interest that Adam Smith is the chairman of the House Tax Committee and Senator Rick Bellinger from Goodland is the senator in charge of the Senate Ways and Means. So adequate Western Kansas representation on those important tax committees. The chair's comment with regard to a little bit of the governor's request to eliminate sales tax on food is, except that we use sales tax here locally on bonded projects. And I don't want folks in Topeka to be cutting revenue for local governments that have bonded projects on important public works projects without consideration of its effect on the revenue stream. It seems to me that it's good a policy to want to consider all of those things, but we ought to maybe keep in mind that local governments are the ones in most constant and closest contact with our citizenry. I'm sure that we can lend an ear to that. Commissioner Pishney?
Well, I'm not wanting to interrupt, but I, I forgot one comment.
Go ahead.
I will not be attending the Economic Development Annual Meeting, even though that's my assigned committee because I'm out of town Thursday through Sunday. However, I did notice in today's city commission agenda that the chairman of Economic Development is resigning his term and so there, during the annual meeting, there will be an election of a new chair of that organization. So just a heads up and just for informational purposes.
Well, I think that we ought to go ahead and put in the record for all those who may not know, Phil Esquerino has been the Economic Development Board Chair and has served our community in various positions for a great number of years and he's cutting back a little bit, caring for elders and others. We appreciate Phil's work, both on economic development and within our community. Encourage him to get back in public service when time allows him to do so. Also, I would note that we are going to have a work session on February twentieth. Please, everybody, schedule that into their timeframe. Commission meetings are the fifteenth and the twentieth, or the, excuse me, the fifth and the twentieth. And our planning session accordingly with regard to.
The work session is after the commission meeting?
Correct, on the twentieth.
There'll be a review of the governance model and I think that the personnel policy will be sent out along with the policy reviewed this morning.
Anything else, Administrator, we need to have in that work session?
You did mention the drug policy, so we may have that for you to peruse through and.
Alright. Very good. Anything else today? Alright, motion to adjourn, Mr. Jones?
I'll move. Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. Further discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned. Looking for heat.